I now call this meeting to order on August 23rd, 2018 at 7:16. Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission of the City of Moreno Valley. We apologize for the delay, but it was technical and we want to ensure that everyone has the same opportunity to see the same things we do. May we now have the roll call? Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Commissioner Steven?
Present.
Commissioner Sims?
Present.
Commissioner Dejeanay?
Present.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Vice Chair Corsick?
Present.
Chairman Barnes absent. You. The Pledge of Allegiance will now be led by Mr. Jeffrey Sims.
Please stand.
Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. We are now going to move to the approval of the agenda. Would fellow commissioners have any, anything they'd like to say about that before we move? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move to accept the agendas presented.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and let's do the vote. Are we doing this online? We can just do a verbal? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? And abstentions? Okay, motion carried. We're moving on to our consent calendar and the approval of the, is that mid, wait, what am I doing here? Oh, that's the approval of the agenda. We're on to the approval of the minutes, minutes of July 26th, 2018. Any comments from fellow commissioners? If not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, and a second?
I second it.
Okay, and let's just do this ver, oh no, we can do it now. Okay, we could vote. And it looks like... Is it all up there? Did everyone push it? Nothing is showing up. Let's do it ver. I think we might have some abstentions on this one. So all that approve the minutes, say aye.
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 Any nays?
Yes.
And any abstentions? And we have two abstentions. Oh, it went up, okay. We got it. All right. All right, next, moving on, the procedure for the public comments. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda, under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, should complete and submit a speaker slip to the Planning Commission clerk. There is a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the commissioners. Please move to the front of the room when you hear your name called. Do we have any speaker request? Not at this time, no. We have none, okay. Moving along to non-public hearing items. At this time, we have no items. Now we're moving to the public hearing items. Questions or comments from the public on a public hearing matter are limited to three minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. Those wishing to speak on any public hearing item should complete and submit a green speaker slip to the Planning Commission clerk. Today, our item number one is a request for an approval for a change of zone and plot plan for a warehouse building. The staff report will be given by Julia, Julia Descartot.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I'm Julia Descartot, Associate Planner, and the item before you this evening includes a change of zone to modify the land use for the construction of a warehouse building, and included with this would be a certification of an environmental impact report, adoption of a statement and overriding considerations, the adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Brodeia Commerce Center. The project was noticed to all properties within 300 feet of the site. It was noticed in the newspaper and posted on the site prior to the hearing. The site is located on the northwest corner of Brodeia Avenue and Heacock Street, extending north towards Alessandro Boulevard. The site is zoned business park and business park mixed use northerly to Alessandro Boulevard. Surrounding zoning includes residential five to the east, neighborhood commercial to the north, and the east side along Alessandro Boulevard with business park to the west. The proposed change of zone will change the zoning designation for approximately 15.3 acres from business park to light industrial for the entirety of the southern parcel and business park mixed use, which is on the northerly site, to light industrial for a portion of the northerly parcel with 3.8 acres remaining on the corner of Alessandro and Heacock, and that area will remain as business park mixed. During our discussions for the change of zone from mixed use to light industrial, our desire was to keep the mixed use on Alessandro, on the Alessandro frontage in an effort to promote the business park mixed type use of development there that could also include a commercial element in keeping with the Alessandro corridor plan. In the very first review prior to the submission of this project, the proposal, staff met with the developer and the proposal had the building a little bit closer to Alessandro Boulevard, and after careful discussion between the applicant and staff, the building size was reduced and pushed south on the parcel, and the parking and circulation modified to allow this size building with minimal impact to Alessandro frontage in both aesthetics and circulation. Several benefits of the zone change include jobs, local hiring, multi-use trails, landscaping, public improvements, and support development opportunities for the remaining parcel. Also in consideration, it was discussed that a smaller development along Alessandro, along the Alessandro frontage would incur some public improvements. Along the frontage is a required multi-use trail, the San Juan Batista Trail. In an effort to assist in making the remaining parcel a viable development opportunity, Alire Property Group, the developer, agreed to obtain an easement from the current property owner to the City of Moreno Valley and provide a financial contribution for the future construction of the trail along the frontage on Alessandro Boulevard with the remaining parcel from Alessandro to Heacock. In addition, Alire will be constructing the trail all along the Heacock street side from Brodeia and beyond their frontage to Alessandro. Landscaping will be installed along the Heacock Street project frontage between the public right-of-way and the fence along the channel. All landscaping areas, both onsite and offsite, will be subject to the landscape requirements of the municipal code to include trees, shrubs, and ground covers. The proposed building is 261,807 square feet. There'll be 33 dock doors on the west side of the building for shipping and receiving. The parking will be included for autos on the south side and the north side of the building with trucks on the west side of the building. The multi-use trail is along the east side perimeter. There'll be the public row of landscaping and landscaping on the site as well, bio-retention basin down along Brodeia. The building will be a concrete tilt-up design with earth tone colors with green reflective glazing. Articulated building elements include parapets, canopies, and mullions used as decorative features for the building. At this time, David Ornellis is here from the environmental firm TMB Planning to provide some information on the environmental process for this project.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is David Ornellis. I am with the consulting firm TMB Planning. Our address is 17542 East 17th Street, Suite 100, Tustin, California 92780. We worked under the supervision of city staff and in collaboration with a team of technical experts to prepare the environmental impact report for the Brodeia Commerce Center project. The environmental impact report before you tonight presents a comprehensive analysis of the proposed project as required by the California Environmental Quality Act. The environmental impact report objectively discloses the information necessary to allow the city to make a fully informed decision regarding the project's potential effects to the environment. The environmental impact report determined that the project has the potential to result in significant effects under the issues of air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and tribal cultural resources, and requires 22 mitigation measures to address these significant effects. The project's 22 mitigation measures are in addition to the city's conditions of approval, the design features proposed by the project applicant, some of which will reduce the project's environmental effects, and all mandatory regulatory requirements that are imposed as a matter of law by the city and state and federal government agencies. After application of the project's design features, regulatory requirements, and the city's conditions of approval, and the mitigation measures identified in the environmental impact report, none of the projects, or sorry, excuse me, one of the project's environmental impact reports, environmental impacts would remain significant, and it is not feasible to fully mitigate this impact to a below, a level of significance. The city council ultimately will be asked to consider adoption of a statement of overriding considerations for the project's significant and unmitigable impact which is related to air quality. Specifically, the project would generate emissions of nitrate, nitrogen oxides during long-term operation that would exceed the applicable South Coast Air Quality Management District's significance threshold even after consideration of the mitigation measures presented in the environmental impact report. California Environmental Quality Act requires that mitigation measures be feasible to implement, that the city have legal authority and ability to enforce the mitigation measure, and that there must be a proportional nexus or a rough proportionality between the impact and the mitigation measure that's being imposed. In the case of the project, approximately 92% of the project's nitrogen oxide emissions during operation would be from vehicle exhaust. The city does not have the authority to regulate vehicle emissions. This is done at the federal and state levels, and the city does not have the ability to restrict certain vehicles that would otherwise be legal to operate in California from traveling on public roads, nor does the city have the ability to monitor what types of vehicles come in and out of the project. Accordingly, there are no mitigation measures that are feasible for the project applicant to implement and for the city to enforce that would substantially reduce the project's nitrogen oxide emissions and that would have a proportional nexus to the project's level of impact. A draft environmental impact report was available for public review from May 18th through July 2nd, 2018. In response to the draft environmental impact report, the city received six comment letters from public agencies and members of the public. Written responses to all of the comments from these six letters are included in the final environmental impact report that's before you tonight. In addition, the city received one comment letter yesterday from the Sierra Club. Written responses to the Sierra Club comment letter were provided to you today. None of the comment letters submitted to the city produced anything that met the California Environmental Quality Act's definition of significant new information, and therefore no substantive revisions to the environmental impact report or additional environmental review were required. In conclusion, the project's environmental impact report provided a detailed and thorough analysis of the project's potential impacts to the environment and addressed all of the items required by the California Environmental Quality Act. The environmental impact report concluded that all of the project's potential impacts to the environment could be mitigated to less insignificant levels with the exception of nitrogen oxide emissions from vehicle exhaust during day-to-day operations. At the conclusion of staff's presentation, I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Also, Haseeb Qureshi with the consulting firm Urban Crossroads, who prepared the project's air quality, noise, and traffic analyses, is here to answer any technical questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, David. There are a couple amendments to the resolutions that you have tonight. The only amendment is to revise the square footage to be the 261,807. I believe the resolutions say 263. I normally write around and say approximately, but I'm not sure how it got to be 263. So anyway, they'll be amended to 261,807. And then also, in response to AB 52, we've been asked to modify the mitigation measures and the conditions of approval. They already reference the tribe monitoring, but Subova would like them to be specifically named, so we'll be doing that, adding those into the, that into the conditions as well as the mitigation measures prior to city council. With that, staff, that concludes my presentation, and at this time, we'll answer any questions for you, and staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the resolutions as amended and thereby recommend that the city council certify the EIR, adopt the findings and statement and overriding considerations, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, approve the zone change, and approve the plot plan for the Brodeia Commerce Center. At this time, myself, David, and his team, and also the applicant, Clark Newhoff, are here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have questions of staff?
Good evening. So I seem to recall several months ago when, I think it was Prologis was doing the development, I think, just on the south side of Brodeia, or yeah, Brodeia, however you say it. There was, if I recall correctly, there was an issue about setback from, with the R5 and all that, from, a setback from the houses that were on the east side of the street, and I think there had to be a variance that was approved with that project. In reading through the material today, I didn't see anything for the need for a setback, so I assumed that that was checked, and there isn't a need for a setback.
That's correct. The Prologis project was down in the specific plan, the industrial specific plan, and that area required a, less of a buffer, and so there was a specific plan amendment for that, this project, based on the distance from the residential, because you have Heacock, then you have the right-of-way and the channel, and there, they meet the setback requirement.
Okay, I forgot what the, what the deal was, so thank you for clarifying that. The other one is, is so, in reading through the, the staff report and mitigation measures and so forth, and based on the input from, from TMB there, that, so the long-term air quality management, or air quality, there's a, it would be, the proper word was, this project will not be able to meet the standards, so it's a continuing violation for the AQMD's NOx limit, or whatever it is for the, for that. And I understand that, that's, but I do have kind of a little bit of concern on the wording in the resolutions, both of them in Section 3. I'm looking at packet page 459. It's, it reads good. I think it reads good, except if I was to read this without reading all the other things, it says, you know, there will have potentially significant impacts on air quality as a direct result of the proposed project unless mitigated. But that's not exactly what we're, what, what was said. There's going to be, some of the things could be mitigated, for instance, the construction activities and so forth, but the long-term air quality due to the truck traffic so far is not going to be able to mitigate it. So it's really not, unless mitigated, it's not mitigated. So I don't know from a, maybe I'm taking fly specks from the pepper right now, but it just seems like that we're not really saying what really is happening here with this resolution.
Paragraph are you in, just so I?
I'm in the, let's see, I'm on page 459, second paragraph up from Section 4. It starts with, "The analysis presented in the EIR environmental impact report indicates the proposed project will have potentially significant impacts on air quality as a direct result of the proposed project unless mitigated." And we just heard that you can't mitigate.
That's correct.
So I just think from a resolution standpoint, it should be straightforward that some of, everything but one can be mitigated, and in the, when council goes to make the, consider the overriding, the statement of consideration, or whatever it is, that that should just be a straight-up, that's what we're saying.
That will eliminate.
It needs to be done on both of the resolutions.
Absolutely.
At that same, that same language.
Anyone else?
There's no way at all that they can use trucks that are, like, less polluted, you know, where they don't let as much the air, or no?
Well, and I can let David speak to this a little bit more if we need to, but there, there's a limited amount of requirements that we can place on drivers to go out and purchase new trucks. Prior to, well, after 2020, there'll, there'll be other requirements that the federal are going to be placing on vehicles. I think in the future, it will, it will get better.
Would that change the impact that potentially will happen now, and then in 2020, there won't be such a bad impact because they have to comply by 2020?
Following your question, I'm sorry.
Well, you just said that in 2020, that the truckers had to more or less comply with trucks that were more, not letting so much of the NOx into the atmosphere. So does that mean that right now, there's going to be a worse potential for that to happen, and maybe in 2020, it would get better, and?
Yes, I mean, I wouldn't say there's any worse potential, but it's, the, impacts have been analyzed based on the current situation in terms of, you know, what the mix of trucks would be and their pollutants and such. Certainly, after 2020, in the future, as we get new technologies, there's going to be improvement to air quality, which some of that is, of course, impossible and speculative to try to quantify at this point because we don't know how, you know, what all the requirements exactly will be, or the phase-in of the use of those trucks. But I think the applicant too, and applicant's environmental consultant can perhaps elaborate.
I think at some point, they're going to have all autonomous electric trucks. Without drivers.
Without drivers.
Anyone else? I have a question. How many potential jobs would this add for the community, this particular project?
I'll let the developer answer that.
When he gives his report, okay. Anyone else? Okay, now I think it's time to hear, oh, sure, I'm sorry.
And I think it was the South Coast Air Quality Management District that, it, it might not have been them, but I think it was them. They were recommending that the diesel standards be 2010 standards, and if, and if you couldn't do that, they said to, you know, 2007 standards. Is that just, you know, hopeful or not possible?
I'll ask David to, to come up and answer that question.
I will actually defer that question to Haseeb Qureshi with Urban Crossroads, the air quality expert. He can explain the phase-in requirements for the new cleaner truck technology in the near future.
Good evening, Haseeb Qureshi, Urban Crossroads, 260 East Baker Street, Costa Mesa. To your point, yes, the 2007 trucks, you know, are technically almost a requirement today because the majority of trucks throughout the air basin are coming, are either coming or going to the Port of LA Long Beach, and the Port of LA Long Beach today has a requirement that all trucks accessing the port meet 2007 or better engine standards. So the majority of trucks on the road today are already meeting or exceeding 2007 or better engine standards. To the question about 2010 trucks and whether or not that would reduce the impacts, it's certainly going to reduce the impacts, but because we don't know by the time this building is fully occupied, there, in all likelihood, the requirement would be, at that time, all trucks, you know, that are four axles or larger would meet those 2010 or better engine standards, and as the years progress, the emissions go down over time. And we didn't, we did, conservatively did not take credit for that in future years, so we're only analyzing from a sequo, excuse me, a SEQA standpoint, you know, the project's theoretical opening year. So it's all, and it's also, I would just add, it's important to put those numbers into context. Yes, we are exceeding those regional NOx emissions thresholds, but those thresholds themselves are, one, set low on purpose by AQMD so that there is a uniform SEQA review process, and all projects effectively are required to do some form of mitigation effectively. That's number one. Secondly, the analysis also conservatively overstates and assumes that all the trucks accessing the site effectively are new and weren't operating elsewhere in the air basin, which the reality is, this is, these are trucks that are ultimately going to be displaced. Now, we don't know ultimately who the tenant is at this point, but in a general sense, the, you know, these trucks are not just popping up out of the ground, and they're likely going somewhere already or coming from somewhere already today within the air Hope that answers.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then let's move on to the applicant, and I'm sure we'll have questions.
Good evening. It's a privilege to be here tonight. My name is Clark Newhoff. I'm with Alair Property Group, and we are a pension-funded real estate company. We both develop and acquire warehouse buildings here in Southern California, and we've been a business about 14 years. In those 14 years, we've been pretty active here in Moreno Valley. Some of our tenants include Lowe's and O'Reilly Auto Parts and Minka Lighting. We just recently completed a 1.1 million square foot building on Paris Boulevard at the old modular facility. We don't yet have a tenant for that one, so if you hear one, please let me know. This newest project on Brodeia is, by market standards and in our world, relatively small, but we did take, as we've heard from Julia, we did take the, the approach of a full environmental impact report, which we've had the privilege of reviewing. But even before that, we took a lot of time with staff to review the aesthetics and function and reducing the impacts of the project. We've been through a couple of those benefits, or I should say, kind of notable attributes of the project, but I think it's worth repeating that in this project, we are preserving four acres at the corner of Heacock and Alessandro for future commercial use, kind of preserving that view window, and also that we orientated the dock doors away from the residences and facing the existing business park and industrial park. And also that we orientated the, the dock doors away from the residences and facing the existing business park and industrial park. Some other benefits, some of which are obvious, and that's why this group of men and women are here tonight, but jobs, both short-term in the form of construction and long-term in the form of office and, and warehouse positions. We'll be paying nearly 1.8 million dollars in fees, both to the city and local jurisdictions. Those are some of the more obvious ones. I think Julia mentioned the landscape enhancements on Heacock, on that important view corridor, and the, the bike trails that we will be putting in. In the case of Heacock frontage from, from Alessandro to Brodea, actually building the, the trail. And in the case of Alessandro, providing the land and, and funding for that, for that important bike trail and connectivity. The last thing I would add is that, and then I'll answer the question about jobs last, but the last thing I would add is that outside of the EIR, we discretionarily and voluntarily reached out to the community across the street, took a 500-foot radius and reached out to all the businesses and residences. I sent forty-eight certified mailers. Up till this moment, I haven't heard from any of them, although I did invite them to call me or, or meet with me at any time. As far as jobs go, we get this question often, who's going to occupy the building, how many jobs? And I could go into a diatribe on how these warehouse buildings are attracting higher employment than ever, and that's true. It's still hard to put a finger on how many jobs precisely will be in this warehouse. But I would say, you know, well, let me put it in context. My company owns, not my company, but the company I work for owns 120 buildings in Southern California. Everything from, you know, 20,000 square feet up to a million one square feet. So we have pretty good data points on how many people are working in these buildings in various size ranges. And I'd say in 250,000 square feet, unless we get a manufacturer who really packs it and could have, you know, 400 employees, I'd say the, the general range is somewhere between 50 and 125. And that could be on two or three shifts per day. Now, we're parked for more than that, we're parked for 127 on a shift. So it'd be great if we got, you know, 250 employees on two shifts. But I think, you know, 50 to 125 is a, is a reasonable range. And with that, thank you for your time, really appreciate it. And thank you for considering the project, look for, looking for your support, thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant while he's up?
I was just curious, it said that you weren't planning on having any refrigeration in this unit. Could that change if you had somebody that wanted to use refrigeration in their?
So that could change. The, the likelihood of this entire building being refrigerated though is very remote. So it, it's not, it's possible, it's a good question because it is possible. But typically, we would see a food-type user, and they'd have a small requirement for, you know, five or 10 or 15,000 square feet of refrigeration, that's kind of the typical. I believe there's a request, but not an absolute necessity, and maybe Julia or the consultants could answer the question, that if there, if the, if the building were refrigerated, that we'd come back for further approvals. And I don't, I'm not exactly sure where we landed on that, on that issue, but we can clarify that point for you.
Oh, and the other, the other question is, the source of power for this building, would it be Edison or Moreno Valley Utility?
So this is in the jurisdiction of Moreno Valley Utility?
Okay.
Yes.
So there would be adequate hookup if, if you did, if you were to need refrigeration?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I might have you back up again. Let's open the public hearing. You are reminded that when you are called up, you have three minutes to speak. I believe the timer will be working. And let's get started. I don't have a list of people just yet. Okay, the first person up is Tom Thornsley, please. Followed by Thomas Ruiz. It starts once you start speaking.
I'm on my screen. Will I see it on my screen?
It'll come on the screen to your right.
There, I gotta look there instead of here, okay. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Tom Thornsley, I'm a resident on the east end of town. I've actively followed a lot of the changes in the city. I have one disappointing thing, is we keep chipping away at our mixed-use, or in this case, our business park areas, converting it to industrial, bringing in more warehouses. We've now creeped pretty close to Alessandro. In the future, we're not going to have the diversity of opportunities because we slowly but surely done away with that type of use throughout most of the city. So I wish you would pay more attention to that, maybe direct staff not to be so generous at, at going forward with those things. Part of my questions were answered by Julia during the meeting and having looked at the conditions of approval regarding the landscaping along the back. I would encourage that staff bring you plans that are reflective of some of these major changes or things that have to be added to it, so that you truly get to see what you're voting on and not voting on the words of the context of the conditions, but you actually see how those conditions materialize on there. It, it seems odd to me that it's not there. I wish this building along Heacock had more relief on it. It's 1200 or 1400 feet long, it has no in-and-out annulation on it, it has a little bit of height. I will compliment it on having a lot of nice physical features on it, as opposed to just a painted palette with different paint patches. It looks like it's got glass panels, so it is more interesting. I really would like to see more relief. I've watched what's been built out on the east end of town along the freeway, and it's kind of disappointing. It just stays flat as you go along. So I'm looking to see more of that when it's very visible. State law requires that all buildings in California now provide the infrastructure for charging stations for electric vehicles. It's more extensive than you may know. It requires that 10% of the parking stalls be prepped with the infrastructure for charging stations. Sadly, the state law doesn't require the charging stations to be installed. It's, it's a big miss in the sense that if you want this type of infrastructure to be fully available, you need to start conditioning projects to at least put in some charging stations. You know, in this case here, I think he said 127, so it would require, you know, if you, if you required them to put in for 10 parking stalls, actually put the stations in, it would be of a, a better benefit, both to the community and to the users. And it might help also a little bit of the air quality. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thornsley. Next, we have Thomas Ruiz, followed by John Light.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Thomas Ruiz. I'm a representative of the Labor's International Union, speaking on behalf of Labor's Local 1184, representing Riverside and Imperial County. We're here today to support this project. We believe this project will provide good work opportunities for local residents. As, as many of you see here, we have a lot of construction workers. And every day, we are working ourselves out of a job by performing the way that we do and constantly build projects on time and on budget. We're constantly looking for more work. And this project provides that opportunity to sustain the wages, health benefits, and pension that members of this community deserve. I would like to say as well, a lot of, we, we've been fortunate enough to work on a lot of these type of developments throughout Southern California. And we've seen a lot of great attributes as far as tax base, job opportunities, you know, aesthetics, especially in some areas that don't have the infrastructure like this one. But the tenants that actually move in there are so diverse in, in what they actually provide. And not necessarily always a distribution center of, of goods, but it could be, you know, some small businesses, small local businesses that move in there, trying to set up, start up, stuff like that. So with that, we urge you to support this project and recommend it to the city council, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Next, we have John Light, followed by Michael Sotomayor.
Good evening, my name is John Light with the Labor's Union. I represent over 4,500 members in Riverside and Imperial County. And we're definitely in support of this project. It, it's going to be good-paying jobs for the members with benefits and a lot of local hire, so that's a good thing. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Light. Next, Michael Sotomayor, followed by Juan Munoz.
Good evening, commissioners, I want to thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Southwest Carpenters, Local 951, Riverside County. If you look behind, we've got a lot of brothers and sisters, family members. We stand united in agreement with, with Alair Properties. And we do believe that this is going to bring forth, as my fellow brother said, more local-paying jobs, good-paying jobs. I myself am a local resident, been a resident here for three years. My wife and I bought a home right here in, off of Box, Box Springs Road. And we've had the opportunity to be able to see what Moreno Valley is really developing into. And, and before we bought a home here, we were really reluctant because we've heard of past reputations and stuff. But when we came out here and we got showed the properties in the area that we're in, we really, really fell in love with it. And we really got a chance to see what it's growing into. And we really do support and, and want to give back to our community as well, not just as a carpenter and what you guys can help us achieve and get as good-paying jobs, but also what we can give back to the community. You know, I myself like to participate in helping inner-city youth with our local church. And, and sometimes I, I don't have the privilege of doing that based on, I'm always working out of, out of city. Los Angeles, Orange County. I can go out there for eight, nine hours, and it's going to take me four hours to get back home, and it's just a terrible commute. And sometimes by the time you get home, you just don't have that opportunity to, you know, have the, the strength because our, our work is very physical. So we don't have sometimes the strength to just want to continue to do anything, want to relax a little bit. So I respectfully ask that you would, please vote in favor of this project, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sotomayor. Next, we have Juan Munoz, followed by Rafael Burgueras.
Good evening, commissioners. It's been about a year since I spoke here last, I believe it was with the Pro Lodges Project, as a matter of fact. In, in the last year, well, two years, two years ago, the atmosphere in Moreno Valley is changing. Where before developers and labor might have had some indifference towards each other, now it seems like they're in a partnership with each other. They're working together, settling issues that it might have. For one, getting skilled labor. We have 150,000 square foot training facility in Ontario, teaches the best carpenters, the best techniques in the business. Another one might be safety. We also teach safety, the best OSHA standards in the business. Another one is local hire. I think Alair has committed to using local hire with great benefits, great pension, great pay. Those three, those three issues have been resolved, and we're in strong support of this project and ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. And our final speaker is Rafael Burgueras.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, residents, and guests. Clark mentioned it well, the benefits, what the city will get if this project gets approved. But to the trucks, because I went to a seminar. 2020, the state of California is making all truckers, companies that are independent, to have a sticker like we have on our plate. In other words, they have to change the device that the smoke comes out of, the emission. They have to have a brand-new smog device on all the trucks, according to the law in 2020. So if a trucker comes into the state of California or does business in the state of California, he must have a sticker on the side of the door. So when the chip pulls him over, the first thing the chip's going to look to see if they got that sticker. If it doesn't, he'll get a ticket for the smog. That's the law in 2020. Okay, that's one of the things that I went to the seminar, the state mentioned that. So that's what's happening with the truckers. That's why you see a lot of truckers today with new devices, they're not going to wait to 2020. The only one that's going to wait to 2020 is the independent truck driver that cannot afford to buy the device or buy a brand-new truck, like me, in my 1995. I cannot buy a $40,000 truck, so I ride my old little truck until they catch me. Same thing, same thing, okay? I tell the truth. What is going to happen, and that's happening right now, so we have a lot more cleaner air, okay? We do. The state and all these organizations that fought for clean air is working. It just takes a little bit more time for the law to enforce in 2020, and it'll get a lot better, the air. Second, the company is asking you to allow them to build one warehouse. That's why they're asking you to change the plot plan and the zoning, change of zoning. There, you're only allowed to be 50,000 square foot. So if you take 222, 262,000 square feet, divide that into five, you have to build five warehouses to accommodate that company. So they're asking you to build one, make a change. The one across the street from the one they're building, we made that change about a year ago or so. Three of yous were on the planning commission, and that got approved. So that's all it is, it's a small change. I understand that some of the speakers are not seeing what they visioned 30 years ago. But that's not going on. We're not building plazas anymore in the city of Moreno Valley. We're not building small plazas with a lot of little businesses, that's gone. So we can use this property to build warehouses or large industrial buildings so we can allow these men and women to work and other people to work and to pay taxes into our city. That's the purpose of this.
Thank you, Mr. Burgueras. Would the applicant like to come up and address anything of the public comments from there? Yes or no? No, okay. All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing at this point and open this up to the commissioner's deliberation. Mr. Sims, you look like, no, nothing, anyone?
One comment.
Go ahead.
One thing I like about this project is we're leaving that four acres on that corner, which is kind of a cornerstone for Alessandro and Heacock. I think it was a good move on moving that building back as opposed to having it right on Alessandro. So I think that part of it's excellent, it looks like a good building to me, and I, I vote in favor of it.
I, I do have a comment on the, on the, I'm glad they are leaving the four acres up in the corner. I, I tend to agree that there is plenty of additional space for redevelopment along Alessandro to improve the streetscape and the, the commercial look along Alessandro. And going away, adding more strip malls and small little businesses like that, really, in my opinion, shouldn't be, be encouraged, like the smaller type things and, and try to revitalize Alessandro because that is a portal into the city, and it needs help. So anything they can do to preserve strips along there that, that can help attract mixed-use and business that's attractive would be welcomed.
I think my question that I had posed prior was addressed. And I think that they didn't actually put it in the EIR because it wasn't really a factor that they had to deal with right now. But I think as time goes by, because of the laws in California changing, I think that will be addressed. So I don't have a problem, that was my biggest problem with the project, but I don't have a problem with it. So I'm also in agreement to passing it.
Anyone else? Well, I'd like to say I like the design of the building. I'm always looking for us to make more unique and more interesting buildings in the city. And I think this is well-designed, I think it fits the space, I think it has some interesting factors for the look of a warehouse, and I want to commend you for taking it a little bit further and making it more interesting so it's not just a plain box. So I, you know me, I'm always looking for landscaping and things like that. But I, I do think this is a very nice-looking project, I think it's been well-thought-out, and I believe that I will vote for it. If there are no other people who want to speak?
I just wanted to thank whoever gave us these nice color elevations of the project because it is a beautiful project. And, you know, driving by it, you almost might not even know it was a warehouse. So thank you for whoever did that.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we might be ready to take a motion. Or do you want to say something else?
Well, I just, if, it sounds like there are two modifications when whoever makes the motion, that there's a modification on the square footage and also on the, there's going to be some rework on the one paragraph that we were...
Oh, on your paragraph, and also about specifically stating "Saboba." So we have the two revisions and then the removal of those two words that you wanted.
Or, I'm not trying to guide what the words are, just they need to be, it should be modified because there are, there is impacts that can't be mitigated, where this, this would tend to lend to a belief that they could all be mitigated with, with the mitigation measures.
Then I think that should be part of the motion, just to remove those words. I mean, I mean, just clean it up, if that's what you're asking for.
Yeah.
Make the motion. And you've got to remember it all?
All right, I'll, well, then, are we ready to do that?
I would say we've had our discussion.
Okay, well, then, I'd like to make a motion then. Okay. So I would make a motion that the planning commission approve resolution numbers 2018-4, 20-8, 41, and 2018-42. And recommend that the City Council, for Resolution 2018-40, certify the, do I have to read all of this, or?
No, you can just make a motion to approve those three resolutions as proposed by staff and include your modification that you wanted to include.
That's exactly what I meant to say. So on the, make the recommendation to approve the three resolutions that I just read off and pending modifications to the, to clean up section three of the resolution that we discussed, and you'll have the minutes to reflect on that, the square footage and the reference to Saboba.
Sounds like a good deal. Do I have a second?
Second tap.
Okay, let's call for the vote. Running slow. There we go. And motion is approved. Unanimous. It appears that we have no other commission business at this time. Are there any staff comments?
Vice Chair Korzek and Commissioners, we will be taking this item to the City Council at the next available City Council hearing.
Okay, very good. And any planning commissioners' comments? I would like to thank the staff for the very comprehensive report. We got it in a timely manner. You did a wonderful job on this, very few questions. Thank you. Okay, the meeting is now adjourned at 8:09.